We actually take bids in one of the open hangars at the Works Facility. And we took one last year, it was one of the road jobs that literally was during the tropical storm.
Hi Brian, how are you? Hello.
How you doing?
Fine, thanks. Bruce, hi.
Howdy.
Hey Bruce.
Sable.
Hey Bruce, hi. Dave is on. I think we're pretty close to a quorum here.
Yeah.
Very good.
It's after six, we are live.
That looks like Mr. John Doyle.
Hi Mr. Doyle, how are you? Mr. Doyle, you're muted.
Jackson?
Mr. You're muted. Hi Mr. Jackson, how are you?
Mr. Herzl, how are you on this fine evening?
Yeah, fun, thanks.
Tonight Gillian's going to master and commander.
That's, that's correct.
Gillian, you have your flag?
I'm ready to go, Mr. Herzl.
You have a flag?
I happen to have a flag right here.
I do.
Okay, both you have. Gillian, I don't think we have a quorum. We don't have a quorum.
John's ready to go with the flag.
We don't have a quorum yet.
We do, Mr. Meyer is here.
Oh Jacob, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Okay, so Mr. Meyer and Mr. Stillie, that's not him. Okay, everybody ready? Mr. Meyer, you there? Justin's here too. Let me just see if they're logged on. Justin, are you there? Hi.
I'm here.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Meyer?
I'm here.
Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. Let's rise and salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which we stand. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Could you please read in the certification of compliance?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the summer ledger of the Bulge Board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Sable. We'll skip him for now. Mr. Flanshaw.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Here.
Mr. Renner.
Is he in the back, the second to last, and please come forward, definitely.
Is that Mr. Sable on our telecall?
I muted it.
Okay.
Mr. Isaacson's not here, correct? That's a different Levy.
Levy is there. I see, I law you. Levy Isaacson.
Ah, there he is. Levy, are you here? I see you were unmuted, I didn't hear you speak.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you Levy?
Good. Sorry for my tardiness.
Okay, she asked if you're here. Are you here?
I am.
Okay.
Physically, physically, I'm here.
Mr. Meyer.
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Retic, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Ackerman.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Let's proceed. Swearing of professionals.
Go ahead, John.
John said you're running.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I think John is muted.
I don't think I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear him.
Okay.
Mr. Vog, can you hear me?
No.
Mr. Vog, we don't hear him.
Terry, you're muted.
Somebody muted me, yeah. I swore to somebody, I thought it was John.
Okay.
Do you swear a firm testimony before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
The board engineer and planners taking the oath.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to number three, order and ordinance review. Harry, are you? Yeah, Ally, please announce it.
We have tonight two ordinances from the committee for review. The first is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash nineteen regarding distribution facilities and the second is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty stormwater management. I'm gonna share my screen so I can just pull up those copies that are from the clerk's office. They have been previously shared with the board though, so I believe they should be familiar to you.
Yes, yes, if I could, Chairman, both of these ordinances, in my opinion, are pretty straightforward. The first one is distribution facilities. As indicated in the heading, the township wants to tighten up some of the definitions in terms of distribution facilities, wholesale, retail. The changes to the ordinance are what is outlined on paragraph one, the second paragraph from the bottom and also on page two. Spoke with Harold Hassel about this briefly, basically tightening up definitions. Pretty self-explanatory to me.
And Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I would note that this language revision is consistent with the interpretation that our professionals have given to this. So what it really is, is just making it more, less ambiguous. Let me put it that way, to further carry out the intent to allow this type of use there.
So basically, there's nothing changing with this ordinance, it's just clearing up the language and being more.
That's my understanding, Chairman. It is basically specifying what is or is not a distribution facility. Goes into detail as to what's included and what's not.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Any questions, any board members?
To the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
Can you, Ally, can you go back to the big definition? Okay, stop. The establishment of all receiving stormwater is a distribution facility selling products, whether directly to consumers or to resellers. Now, if it's directly to consumers via, you know, UPS, that's one thing. This is not a, this not, this not mean retail.
Well, that's the issue, Mr. Stern. They want to make certain that now with the proliferation of internet companies where there are warehouses and distribution, it's debatable whether that's retail or it's not wholesale because it's not at a discount merchant to merchant, although it can be as well. And then the thought was, you know, picture something like, and I'm not saying this is the model, but picture Ferguson or formerly L&amp;H Supply, where the primary focus of the business is to have distribution, but there is a small shop where people could come in and purchase things. But the main intent was to make sure that it would not stop, you know, distribution via trucks to retail customers.
I just, I just don't want this to be a backdoor way of saying basically everything in the industrial park is now retail.
No, that.
Is that clear?
It doesn't say retail on it.
Well, selling to consumers directly, I would call retail, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I get, I get what the intent here is, the intent is fine, but, and I'm not saying, you know, if there's any.
Mr. Stern, the way, the way I would look at it, that in the industrial park, selling occasionally to the public, it's not like a grocery store that you're selling every day, people are coming and going the whole day.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you. Here's the problem though, it doesn't say occasionally. I don't know if we could suggest to the township to tighten it up a little bit to say, my opposed to this, I'm just saying, when there's language like this, that people could try to thread the needle and say, now I could do retail.
I don't know what to.
You know, selling to consumers directly, that's retail.
Mr. Stern, what we could do is we could tell the committee that we believe this is consistent with the master plan. The board is, wants to make certain that the committee safeguards that this is not going to open to a, you know, a primarily retail use such as a big box store that sells to retail customers on premises.
A supermarket.
Or a supermarket.
Right, the example you gave from Ferguson, it's mainly a warehouse sending trucks and everything. They do have a small area that people could come in and buy. But the primary business, I think, is the wholesale business.
Now, I can think of a few businesses in the industrial park like that, where, like, there's a pool supply there and you could go to a counter and you could buy some pool supplies. It's, you know, that's just a very minor, you know, accessory to their primary business, which is, you know, distribute.
Okay, so based on that, I would ask for a motion to, or recommended or not recommended?
I would move to recommend it with the provisos that we discussed, and I don't know, John, how you communicate that to the township attorney, but.
What we typically do is Boris or myself will write a letter stating that the board approved it, found it consistent with the master plan. However, the board wants to make certain that this does not open a conventional retailer such as a, you know, a big box or a supermarket type of use.
John, at least there'll be some legislative history, if you will, and we can say specifically that the language, you know, sales directly to consumers could be construed as retail. And that we would be, you know, would want to make sure that the township clarifies that selling directly to consumers, unquote, does not mean retail. And that any, you know, should be, you know, an ancillary function, not a primary function.
Yes, I think that'll work, and I just want to be careful because retail is the whole idea, is that, you know, you get a package directly from someone that comes by UPS truck, that's a retail sale.
That's fine.
We want to make certain that that's permissible, that that would be the primary focus, but you don't want a use such as Mr. Herzl gives an example of a grocery store where walk-in customers are the primary focus of the building, of the business.
So if you could fine tune that, John, and when you send it to Ally, that way at least if somebody tries to get cute with us down the road, we've got some legislative history we can point to, that's not.
Okay, so based on what Mr. Stern made the motion, I would ask for a second on that?
I'll second it, Chairman, this is Justin.
But Justin seconded it. A roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Ms. Sable, are you there? Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to the second one.
The second ordinance, I believe I, I'll let Terry go over that and I'll pull that up on the screen as well. Terry, you there?
He's there.
Somebody keeps muting me.
Yes, you're gonna be muted every time you're not speaking.
Oh, great. Okay. All right, guys, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be interrupting all night now.
Okay.
Anyway, no, this is a topic near and dear to my heart. I've been Lakewood Stormwater Coordinator for a decade plus. All towns, including Lakewood Township, are being required by DPD to adopt a new stormwater ordinance that's based upon regulatory changes that were made to the state's stormwater rule, NJAC seven colon eight. This is similar in concept to what we've been using in Lakewood since the mid-two thousands. Upgrades to the ordinance primarily twofold. One is, the state is trying to make the ordinance more towards water quality protection. And as a result, if you go through this, you're gonna see the term green infrastructure come up a lot in the ordinance. They're trying to get people who design these facilities to incorporate more water quality enhancement measures, things like bio swells and the like, instead of discharging directly from parking lots or roofs into pipes. The second part of this is that stormwater designs are going to have much more rigorous requirements in terms of soil testing and soil data to substantiate a design, which in places like Lakewood is a good thing, in my opinion, within reason, because we do so much recharge. But those are the main changes to the ordinance. The version of the ordinance that the town is in the process of adopting, which the board sees in front of it, is the NJDPs model ordinance based on NJAC seven colon eight, which was adopted last March.
So Terry, basically, we're adopting this ordinance to be, to do exactly what the state recommended for every single town?
That, that is correct. Lakewood and all other New Jersey municipalities are being required to adopt this version of ordinance, at least addressing the minimum standards of the new NJAC seven colon eight, which are codified in the state's model ordinance.
So basically, it's strictly for engineers to know how to, how to apply the new standards, that's it?
Engineers are going to have to be more on their toes than ever, and I, I've had conversations with several.
Okay.
Terry.
Yeah, Dave.
Terry.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Dave.
Dave here. Does this include the breaking up, when a builder builds and compacts the dirt with the trucks and everything going over? They'll have to break up the compacted dirt before he gets a CD?
There, there are techniques that are referenced in what's known as best management practices in DPD regs and policies, which are stronger enforced through this ordinance than they were the first way. The anti-compaction is also enforced through the local soil conservation district as well, but the, the short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any board members have any questions from Terry? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I'll move this order. Justin.
Okay, Justin moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Sable, are you here? Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, we're going on to the public hearing. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have one change to the agenda. Item number two, which is application SD twenty-four fifty-seven for Benjamin Barr has requested to table this application until further notice. I advise the applicant that since they've carried so many times and they keep revising the plans at the last minute and the neighbors claim that they still have not spoken directly with the applicant, that I will not be giving them a tentative date until the plans are complete and the board engineer has received them and they are ready to go forward.
So, so basically, Ally, they have to renotice, is that correct?
They have to renotice for a future meeting, so we are not hearing that. Other than that, the other five applications have no changes to them and we're ready to move forward.
Okay.
Ally, through the chair.
Yes.
Are we, are we hearing, are we hearing four, five, and six together?
The board can hear them together, they will need to take individual motions on each application though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Who, which attorney is here? Gillian, wanna announce it? Number two, if anybody's listening, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the public, please be advised that number two on our agenda, Benjamin Barr, minor subdivision application, will not be heard tonight. It is going to be adjourned with notice required for a future hearing. And again, we do not have a new date for the matter at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go on to number one.
Alright, so number one is SP twenty-four eleven AA for school sensor. It's a change of use site plan exemption to convert a house to a school.
Okay. Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm reading.
Just give a second. Give a second for Ally to bring it up, please. Okay, thank you, Ally.
All right, I'm reading from our February second review. Beginning at the top of page three, I'm, I'm sorry. Being a change of use, as indicated on page two, this is not a site plan. There's a number of waivers that are listed on page two. Recommend granting the waivers for hearing purposes with the understanding that the board may want to have specific improvements done if they want to consider approving the application, and those would be conditions of approval.
So, do we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations to grant the waivers?
For hearing purposes.
I would like to see the final, I'll call, final picture of what we are going to okay.
We're not, they're not building anything right now. I think it's just a change of use on the property. If they build anything, I think they have to come back to the board.
Okay.
Is that correct, Terry?
My understanding, and we'll get testimony shortly, the plan that I have from Next Gen is strictly a change of use.
A change of use.
Now, like I said, what happens with a lot of these applications, the board may, may be in favor of it, but they may want things like additional parking, fencing, sidewalk, which ultimately has to get added to a plan. And I, I have a caveat that I put in all of these kind of letters that indicates that if that is the case, we would need engineered site plans that show those improvements as a condition of approval.
Basically, right now, we're just acting on the waivers.
For hearing purposes.
Only, right. So I would ask for a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Garfield moved, we have a second. I'll second it. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, now, if everyone goes to page three under zoning, you're going to see several variances that have to be reaffirmed with the change of use. Dimensionally, these are pre-existing conditions with the structure. From your setback, you have an existing non-conforming setback of thirty-three point one feet. Accessory rear yard, you have an existing setback of point six feet. And then perimeter buffer again comes into play with, with the change of use. You also have parking, which is within the buffer, again, existing, but requires variance relief because of the change of use. You have design waivers from the lack of site information as currently proposed, including shade tree utilities, shade trees, lighting landscaping, design waivers required for onsite curbing, driveway width greater than thirty feet, and there's currently no loading or unloading area shown. I'm sure we'll get testimony shortly, and the board can decide whether the application is a good application or whether improvements are warranted.
Thank you, Terry. Who's the engineer, attorney on this?
Brian Flannery here on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Flannery, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As indicated in the application and Terry's report, this is a application for a change of use site plan exemption to convert an existing residential structure into a school. It will be for boys over eighteen years old. The applicant characterizes it more as a neighborhood study group, that they have a morning period where they learn, an afternoon period where they learn, and on the weekends. Going through Terry's report, it lists the variance relief that's necessary, and as he indicates, these are all existing conditions. We're in the R seven-five zone where the schools are permitted use. The minimum front setback, the existing, is thirty-three point one. For a school, forty-five would be required, so we need a variance for that. An accessory rear yard setback for the existing shed, which is point six feet off the line, which would require seven, again, an existing condition. Perimeter buffer relief, twenty feet is required, and less than twenty feet is proposed. Relief for proposed parking, which is within the required buffer, again, an existing condition, the parking is there. Design waivers for shade tree utility, design waiver from providing onsite curbing, and a design waiver for a driveway width greater than thirty feet, all existing features, we're not changing anything. So, in justification for the variances, which are C two variances, the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, the vision statement on page seven says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's my testimony that this does this. The same master plan on page ten under community facility strategies. Number four is to continue to support the development of private schools in the township of Lakewood, and that's what we are requesting here. The municipal land use law, NJSA forty colon fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act, is aid to encouragement of action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And the, the school does promote the general welfare. So for C two variances, we need to show it relates to a specific piece of property. This particular piece is on Bergen Avenue between Linden and Somerset. There is residential development in the area. This is an area that was rezoned based on the two thousand and seventeen master plan to R seven-five. It's developed with duplexes. Fairly dense residential area, and this provides that neighborhood study group and the availability for the boys over eighteen to have a place to, to study. The purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which is what I previously read. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and it's my testimony that it's actually a benefit and no detriment to public good. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, and it's in accordance with the master plan, and the benefits outweigh the detriments. So continuing.
Brian, is there any building, any construction going on at this time?
Nothing new will be built. There's some internal in order to accommodate the, the different use, but it's inside the building.
Yeah, the footprint is staying the same.
Yes, the footprint is staying the same, the parking's staying the same. One of Terry's comments in the report was to provide a handicap spot, so we'll have to reconfigure. Right now, you can fit ten vehicles there. If we make one a handicap, that will eliminate one parking space, so we'll have nine. The ordinance says one per classroom. We have two classrooms and an office, which would mean three. Maybe consider a couple of other rooms, so maybe the ordinance would say you need four or five, but we have nine.
Brian. Question, Chairman, if I could? Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, Brian agreed to a handicap space. Is. Yeah, um, Brian agreed to a handicap space. Is the building handicap accessible? In other words, if you put a space in, uh, do you have pedestrian access and egress into the building?
The, the, the building will be retrofitted to accommodate handicap access.
Alright, so, so, so in addition, uh, to adding a handicap space, um, you'll have to show, or someone will have to show on an engineered plan, uh, ADA accessibility from the space into the building.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Well, Brian, what's your elevations? You could put a ramp on it?
Uh, it's the, it, it's, it's like a lot of the homes in that area where there's not a lot of elevation change, and, and it, it can be very easily accommodated.
Thank you. Ally, how do, there's, there's an echo from somebody.
Unfortunately, that's why I keep muting Terry. I think just because he's not using headphones, um, it's echoing in the room. It's different user to user.
I am using headphones, Ally. I don't know what's going on.
I don't know why then. I know John's used to give us a lot of trouble, and today his was very quiet. Um, I just adjusted my mic volume. I don't know if it's any better than it usually is, but.
No, you, 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 you're clear. Uh, you're lowering. Yeah, I'm, I'm most on headphones. You're lowering the volume is better?
I don't know.
You were asking me. I messed a little bit up what that issue was. Could you repeat it? Yeah, I just lowered mine. Maybe that'll help.
Okay.
No, John, John, you're, you're good, John. I was saying that you are quieter than usual, and you are not giving us feedback as usual.
Oh, okay.
Hmm.
Through the chair? Mr. Chairman?
I can hear you, Levy. I don't know where.
Okay, let me go. Uh, Brian, Brian, how many students are anticipated in this study group?
It's, uh, at, at any one time, there'll, there'll be roughly a dozen from the neighborhood. Uh, you know, the entire, uh, number of students that would be there would probably, you know, use it uh, uh, on a weekly basis, would probably be closer to, uh, thirty.
And, and how many, um? How many instructors, we'll call them?
Um, I, I would have to, uh, reach out to my, uh, consultant on how many instructors there, there may be, and I saw Mr. Heima Badi, uh, on before.
Yeah, it, technically, if it's a school, it goes according to the classrooms and the offices. If they have two classrooms, they have two, two instructors. I understand, but we have to be practical here. Are there enough parking spots? Okay, so.
Shmuel Senser, if I could chime in, we have one.
One, one second, yeah, you have to, you have to be affirmed. What, the attorney has to affirm you in. Uh, Jillian, are you there? Mr. Senser would like to speak.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Mr. Shmuel Senser would like to speak. He has to be affirmed in.
Okay, I just requested that he be unmuted. Mr.?
Okay.
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, if you could please raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, you may proceed.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. If I may chime in, it's basically a study group. They're adults, so they study together without much instruction. There is one instructor. There are total of two instructors, but they do not instruct at the same time. So you're talking about a total of two instructors, basically, one at a time.
Mr. Senser, this is Levy Isaacson. Um, Brian testified that there may be up to as many as thirty students at one time.
I, I didn't say at one time. I said the.
Throughout the day, Brian?
Uh, i- in the week.
Oh, in the week, okay. Uh, m- m- Mr. Senser, what's the most you anticipate being there at one time?
I, uh, I would anticipate a dozen to two dozen.
Now, if it is up to two dozen, there's only ten parking spots. Nine, if you take one away for a handicap. That would not seem to be enough parking spots.
The vast majority of the people studying live in the neighborhood. They live within, I'd say, three hundred feet of the structure, and they walk over.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Alright, so continuing.
Please go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, continuing through the report, Terry asked, uh, about site improvements, which I, I've given testimony, the parking, and the ADA, I've given testimony. With respect to the refuse, it would be rollout cans. Uh, uh, with respect to lighting, there are, uh, existing, um, lights, uh, on the, on the building, spotlights, uh, just for security, uh, and lighting purposes, and those are existing, and they would remain. Uh, and the other items in the report, we would satisfy during resolution compliance if the board acts favorable.
But Brian, if, if you do, do any expansion, or you wanna build a new building, you have to come back to the board.
And, and any, anything we wanted to build, anything in, in addition to this, we would need to come back to the board and get site plan approval.
Okay, so right now, there are no changes, uh, and you say maximum, you'll have thirty people in the building from the neighborhood, students that would come from the neighborhood. So they, they're not coming with cars.
That is correct.
That's your testimony. Any questions from any board members?
Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Stern.
Chairman.
Mr. Stern?
Uh, I'll defer to Mr. Garfield. He's older than you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just a question, uh, even with a total of thirty students, and this was a house, uh, going to improve the facilities?
That's one question. The other is.
The, Mr. Garfield.
I'll take one at a time.
Yeah, uh, would, I'll just answer my opinion. Uh, they're gonna have to go through the township construction officials to make sure that thirty students can be there, and there's enough bathrooms. Their, their testimony, they're not changing the footprint of the house. Anything interior has to go to the construction official to make sure that you go put students in there. If the, the construction official says you can only put fifteen, you can't put one of fifteen.
Another question I had, uh, on the ADA, the calls are certain width on the doors beside the stairs, there's a ramp going in. Do they plan on changing, uh, doorway so handicapped?
Yes, yes.
People can get in easily.
We, we, we would not get a C O unless we made it comply.
Okay. Just wanted to record of it. Thank you.
Okay.
And, and, and just following up on the chairman's question earlier about if we build anything else, we need to come back. We, we, we also, the school, it, it wants to be a good neighbor, so if they did come back, they've talked to the neighbors, uh, and anytime they came back, they would make sure that the windows don't create a privacy problem for the neighbors. Uh, and, and the board would see that, and, and the, the applicant, it, it, uh, wants to be a good neighbor and, uh, and will comply with the wishes of the neighbors to that extent.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stern?
So, Ally, can you pull up the aerial? I wanna kinda orient myself where this is. I'm not sure I have all my packages in the mail today.
I didn't, um, receive an aerial, but I, I'll pull it up on Google Maps if you give me a minute.
Very helpful, thank you.
You know where Linden Avenue is to get to the high school and the middle school? Uh, you know, when Linden Avenue off Route eighty-eight, you make your first right onto Bergen. Uh, and it's in that, there'd be across the street from where Acton Builders built those roughly thirty election units. And I know you know where the school was, because.
Are you zooming in, Ally, or we just have lag? Which one is it?
I, I don't know what you wanna see. You wanna see, I thought you wanted to see.
See right there? This is what we're talking about?
Yes.
Uh-huh. So I guess, yeah, I guess my only, that's a fairly congested area. And, um, let's say this school gets sold by, to somebody else, and it has a, an approval as a school. You know, I can see a lot of on-street parking, um, occurring, and I don't know how we prevent that.
I, I, I think basically, we, we allow it only for the school, for maximum, like they said, thirty students, and any changes, they have to come back to the board. Any building, any change of use, anything.
The Yehiel, if it, I don't know, thirty students? These are high school? These are, are base measures?
Base measures, that's what they testified. It said eighteen and up.
Yeah, well, those guys could have cars. Um. I'm not opposing this, I'm just asking the question. This is a very, very congested area already. Um, if we have thirty extra cars being on there, there's just not a lot of onsite parking that I'm seeing.
Because of the testimony they gave, that there's no cars, because everybody lives within three hundred feet.
Right, but let's say this, this, the, the, what we're passing tonight will last forever. Um, so let's assume this school gets sold to some other up-and-coming institution that's not serving the local community who are walking.
So I, I would ask Jillian, is it possible that we, we're approving it only for this entity, and if they sell it, they have to come back to the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, generally, um, variance relief runs with the land.
Right.
So I, I don't think that we could necessarily say, you know, that the variance relief disappears once it's sold to another entity.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll reiterate that, you, right, that the approval has to be to the, to the use and the land, not to the user.
Yeah, but.
Pretty fundamental.
Mr. Chairman, you could say that the, the use of the school that was asked for was a, uh, that, that this boys over eighteen and a neighborhood study group type school. So that if somebody comes with something different than a neighborhood study group type school, they would be back to the board. And the applicant would be okay with that condition.
And so, and that would be very difficult to enforce, but that would be a condition, theory, theory could be enforced.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for any board members? Okay, Ally, do we have, I would open to the public. Is there anybody for the public, any neighbors?
Yes, there's a number. Um.
Okay.
There's only one of note, which is different from the others. Mr. Moshe Zinas emailed. Um, he said, hi, it appears the applicant is requesting a waiver from providing streetlights. I'm opposed to this waiver, as street lighting is very important all over town, but especially in this area. I urge the board to require streetlights. All of the other comments that we received were in favor of the application and were just a generic, you know, I am so-and-so, I am in support of, uh, that's what it clears.
They're all neighbors, uh, uh, they're all ma- they all live in the neighborhood. I see Bergen, Bergen. Okay. Okay, Br- Brian, uh, what, are you, are, are you requesting a waiver not putting up lights in front of the building? Streetlights?
The, the, uh, the building has lights on the street. There's no, uh, there's that lighting area and provide there's no ordinance requirement that when you convert a house to a school, you have to add streetlights on Bergen. If streetlights are needed on Bergen, they're needed for the houses, they're needed for everybody, and the township could make that request.
And, uh, as far as your, your testimony is that there's sufficient amount of lighting right now in front of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, one second. Mr. Sabal, just one second. Ally, is there anybody else? I'll, I'll wanna close it to the public.
No, that's all I had.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public, and then Mr. Sabal, please.
I know you. I'm just looking at the, at the, at the plans that they provided. It looks like the total occupant is fifty-eight occupants.
The testimony was thirty.
Alright.
Yeah, but we got, the, the, the hands are probably more here. More binding, if you will. I didn't see that. You can pu- can you pull up that, pull that up, Ally?
You looking at the architectural plan?
Whatever client's looking at.
Uh, that's what I'm asking him.
Is occupancy low? Fifty-eight.
That, that, that's a maximum that, uh, that the architect, and he's a very fine architect, that with the plans. And, and that's, on architectural plans, that's what they do. They indicate max, maximum occupancy, but the testimony has, has been that it's a, uh, neighborhood study group. Uh, Mr. Sabal, I, I don't know if you were on when the rabbi discussed the use.
I, I love you.
I, I, I was just saying that the, what's, what it indicates on the plan is by code, the maximum occupancy level that the architect feels, uh, is permitted. But the rabbi was on earlier and gave testimony about this specific use a- and the occupancy levels, and I, I, I didn't know if you had heard his testimony and had any follow-up to what his testimony was.
No, I didn't hear his testimony. That's why I'm following up with this.
Okay. Can we restrict it to thirty people? I mean, that, that's basically your testimony. That's basically the motion that's gonna be, right?
And a lot of the correspondence also talked about over eighteen. Is that a condition, Brian, that your client is willing to agree to?
Uh, my client's on the meeting, so that's probably a better question for him.
Okay. Uh, if he can be unmuted. Ally, Mr. Senser?
I just requested he be unmuted.
Okay.
Mr. Senser, do you?
Now he's still, okay, now he's on mute.
Yeah. I, 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 I'm, I'm in and out. I didn't, the, the question could be repeated.
The question was, if.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
The, the question was that, your testimony was that it's gonna be for students only eighteen and up, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the question was from one of the board members. Are you willing, if they make a motion that it's only gonna be for eighteen, if, if you wanna switch that, you, you have to come back to the board.
The, the study groups and, and the school will only be for eighteen, yes. That's something we are. Okay, but.
Okay, but that means that there can't be a change of that use without coming back to the board. You know, we decide to make this a masifta or a playgroup or something like that down the road.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, any other board members have any questions? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion on this application. Anybody wanna make a motion?
Chairman, this is Justin. I'm, I make a motion to, uh, approve the application as presented with the, uh, uh, conditions, uh, as stated, uh, by Mr. Stern, that the study group and the, uh, uh, is, is, um, is only eighteen and over, and, uh.
Cap, cap that thirty, Justin, right?
Yeah, okay, cap to thirty.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Garfield?
I don't see.
Davis, Davis muted.
Mr. Garfield?
He's muted, Ally.
I know. All we can do is request the unmute, though. He has to do it. Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sabal? Mr. Flansbourn?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion approved. On to number three now.
Our next application is S D twenty-four sixty-nine, made by Mordechai.
I, Mordechai Icon.
Morty Icon.
Okay.
It's a minor subdivision to create two zero lot line lots from one on River Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
Chairman, I'm.
Sure, would you like to start, Chairman?
You what?
Can I put on the record the timetable between the meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, Chairman, I'm reading from my February twenty-second letter, uh, starting with the bottom of page two under submission waivers. Um, the only waiver we have is purpose submission for Ocean County Planning. Uh, we have no problem with that waiver for hearing purposes. Uh, they'd have to get the plan signed eventually by the county anyway, so we support the waiver.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation?
So moved, Justin.
Moved, second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Terry, on to zoning, please.
Alright, uh, on the top of page three. All right, uh, on the top of page three under zoning, uh, comment one is a statement of fact regarding, uh, duplexes being a conditional uses identified, uh, in section eighteen, ten, fourteen. Second comment is a variance being required for minimum front yard setback from Route nine. Um, we'll have testimony shortly, I believe that's the only variance relief. Uh, and then under design waivers, uh, partial design waivers required from providing street trees along Henry Street.
Okay, thank you, Terry, who's the attorney or the engineer on this application? Brian, okay, Jillian, could you swear a man?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I.
Bri- Brian, you're muted.
I just request, just requested unmute, uh, unmute yourself, Mr. Flannery.
Uh, I, I, uh, agree.
Okay.
It's nothing but true, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner, has indicated this is an application, uh, to do a minor subdivision, uh, a zero outline subdivision with a proposed duplex, replacing the existing single family with a proposed duplex. Uh, as indicated in Terry's report, it's a hundred by hundred foot lot on the corner of River Avenue and Henry Street, uh, under, uh, on page three of the report on zoning.
Uh, what, what zone is it, R ten?
It, it's in the HD six zone.
Okay.
The HD six zones allows duplexes on eighty-five hundred square foot lots.
Uh, and this is ten thousand?
This is, this is ten thousand, yes. Uh, I, I don't, I don't, one under zoning indicates that, uh, it's a conditionally permitted use. Uh, and we meet the conditions, we, we exceed the conditions. Eighty-five hundred square foot, uh, minimum lot area, we have ten thousand, sixty foot minimum lot width, we have a hundred feet. Uh, a variance i- is indicated for front yard setback. Uh, my opinion would be that a variance is not really required because there's an existing building there and section eighteen dash eight oh six of the ordinance says you can expand, uh, and you can keep that. But in, in abundance of caution, we're going to request, uh, that variance and indicate the, um, uh, the justification for it. Uh, so, uh, the, the ordinance indicates from, uh, state highway, uh, seventy-five feet is required, twenty-five feet is reposed, is proposed. Uh, and the existing dwelling is fourteen point seven feet from it, so we're, we're actually increasing the setback to Route nine by ten feet. Uh, we're not in the Route nine desired typical section. Uh, with respect to the justification for the variance that, in my opinion, I don't think we need, but, uh, just so that the, you know, we, we request it and hopefully the board grants the variance and, and then there's no question relating to it. Uh, the Lakewood Master Plan of two thousand and seventeen, on page two under background information, it indicates all the growth, it concludes on page three of that same section. Uh, based on this information, it's therefore important Lakewood Plan for Residential Development to house its growing population. Th- this provides additional housing opportunities on, on a lot in a location that has public transportation and, and it's an appropriate location. Page seven of that same two thousand and seventeen master plan and vision statement, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. It's my testimony that, that this accomplishes that goal. Um, uh, the master plan on page twenty-three under infill development, it says infill development should be promoted because it serves to minimize community development footprint and thereby conserve land resources and reduce traffic congestion. And, and this is a, uh, a very good example of, of, of that type of infill development. Uh, under the municipal land use law, NJSA forty call fifty-five D two, uh, A, encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of development of all lands and estate in manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. It's my testimony that, that this does it in accordance with the, uh, references to the, uh, master plan that I, that I, uh, testified. And E is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. And again, it's my testimony that this does that. For the C two variance, we need to show it relates to a specific piece of property. We have a, uh, property on, on a corner with an existing house on it, which is in need of redevelopment. Uh, th- this is certainly a, a specific piece of property. Purpose of the municipal land use law, which I read, would be advanced. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It, it, it's my, uh, testimony that it's actually a benefit to the public good. Uh, the variances will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And, and in my opinion, it complies with the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And the benefits would outweigh the detriment since there are no, uh, detriments, in my opinion, the, the benefits. Uh, certainly.
So Terry, the, in, in a nutshell, the only variance you're asking is the zero lot line and the front setback, which you're making better than what it was before.
That's my understanding, Chairman.
Okay, now what's, what's with garbage?
Uh, it's, it'll roll out cans, same as everybody else in the neighborhood.
Okay, and you have, uh, how many parking spaces for each, uh?
Four, four parking spaces for each unit.
Okay. Other than any questions for any board members? Okay, I would open up to the public, Ally, is there anybody for the public?
Yeah, I'm sorry, we have one public comment from Mr. Zynus. He said, will the applicant widen the pavement on Henry Street as part of this application? We need the pavement widened, we also need streetlights, that's the only comment I've received.
Okay, but Brian, would you like to answer to that?
Uh, the, the, on Henry Street would be on the opposite side of the street. Uh, certainly, it's my testimony that this applicant is not, uh, doing anything that, uh, would contribute to his being responsible to approve that. Uh, I think that the pavement, the way it is there, actually tends to, uh, mitigate some of the, uh, traffic impacts. And, and my opinion would be that it's more appropriate to leave it as it is. And with respect to street lighting, it, it's a residential street that's been that way. With one house on it, two houses isn't going to be any different. Uh, and it's, and it's my opinion that, uh, it's appropriate as it is.
And Brian, what's with sidewalks?
Uh, sidewalks are, are existing and, uh, uh, we're not asking for any relief with respect to sidewalks.
Okay, there'll be sidewalks on River Avenue and Henry Street.
Yeah, that is correct.
Okay, I will, would close it to the public and I would ask for a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion to approve this application, I guess.
Mr. Meyer moves, do we have a second?
I'll second, Justin.
Okay, Justin seconds, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Mr. Stern is muted. Okay.
Thumbs up, does that count?
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yeah.
Mr. Flansbourn.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Ally, we.
Chairman, have a good night, Jillian taking over.
Okay, thanks, John.
Good night, thank you.
John, who should you take over for?
Okay, uh, Jillian and Ally, we have three things, uh, three things left on the agenda tonight, all the same applicant. Uh, I would like to hear it all at once, I know we may need three separate motions, but I, I think it would be easier to hear it all at once.
Okay.
What, uh, what's your opinion, what?
That's fine, that's, that's fine with me, I think the applicant will be able to present it in a logical order. Um, applications we're considering are under four eight five Oberlin Owner LLC. The first is a minor subdivision, as well as an amended site plan for the existing building that's going to stay on that reduced size lot, as well as two site plans, SP twenty-four oh two and SP twenty-four oh three, for the two new lots being created, both for warehouses.
And Mr. Chairman, just to echo what Ally said, I, I would agree with, with that assessment, we can certainly hear these together. However, we, uh, I would recommend we do separate motions for each.
Okay, so Ally, when we get to the motions, please, we take care of that. Uh, who's the attorney on this application, uh, no, Terry first, Terry, would you like to go through the report, please?
I'm honestly not sure, Chairman, because I've got four different reports I have to go through, so.
Okay, so Terry, I, I apologize, what's your opinion? Can we listen to this all at once or not?
Oh, I think you can hear them all at once, I think you just have to be a little patient because it's going to take time. Uh, it's going to take a little time to work through the different reviews. Um, what I would recommend doing is starting with, uh, the minor subdivision and minor site plan review uh, for the, the parent lot, which is, uh, the subject of minor subdivision, SD twenty-four sixty-eight.
Would it make it easier if we listen to this and we vote on this and then we go on to the other two?
You know, it may not be a bad idea, Chairman, and, and the reason I say that is that the lots for the other two site plans don't technically exist until you act upon this.
Okay, so, so let's do it that way.
That would be a good idea.
Okay, okay, so let's do it that way, I'm trying to make it easier.
All right, I'm going to start with, uh, Ally has on the, on the, uh, up on the screen, uh, the minor subdivision review dated February twenty-second. Um, beginning with that review, going to, um, I don't believe there are submission waivers, I'll go straight to zoning. The, the top of page three. Uh, the sites in the M one zone, uh, there'll be testimony as to the compliance. Minimum lot variances are required for proposed lots, two point oh two and two point oh three, which will be the subject properties of the, the, the two major site plans we're going to hear shortly. Uh, lot width variances are also required for those two lots. Uh, sub, minimum front yard setback variances may be required. Um, fifty yard set, fifty foot setbacks are required for new lots, two point oh one, two point oh two, uh, compared to one hundred feet, uh, with the ability for the Lakewood Industrial Commission to bring a waiver down to fifty. Um, I'm not sure, Ally, did they get the approval from, from the commission yet?
No, I haven't heard anything from the commission.
All right, so since that's still pending, then the board, I guess, should have, should act upon that as variance relief. Um, that would be it for the minor subdivision. Uh, under design waivers, the design waivers required from sidewalk along Overland Avenue.
Terry. Terry, sorry to interrupt you. Um, through the chair and Jillian as well, how, how can we vote on that variance if it's really not in our jurisdiction?
It's in your, your jurisdiction, Levy. If the, if the commission had acted upon the application and recommended a relief, I don't believe it would be a variance in the absence of commission approval, it's a variance condition.
And, uh, and Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, even if we grant the waiver or the variance and the industrial commission doesn't want to grant it, so the waiver falls away, is that, the variance, they don't get the variance?
More often than not, the applications we see, the commission has issued a review already. Um, this one's a little atypical, the, the commission review is still pending. Uh, in the absence of, of any relief from the commission or any recommendation from, from the commission, um, the board has to act on the variances, that's the way I see it anyway. I'm not sure if John or Brian have a different opinion.
No, my, my only question is if the, if we grant the, the variance and the industrial commission feels that we erred and they don't want to give it, does the variance stand or the industrial commission supersedes us?
My understanding for what it's worth, and this would have been a good John question five minutes ago, but.
We have a, we have a good replacement over there, Jillian.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I believe, I believe the variances, if granted, would still stand. The commission may have recommendations, uh, more towards the site plan elements, um, but I believe that they would stand.
Okay.
I, I would agree with that. Yeah, and I, I would agree with that, if the planning board, the planning board has the power to grant variance relief, if the board grants the variance, I, I believe it would stand.
Okay. So ta- ta- technically, Jillian, even if the, they acted upon the, the industrial commission voted that they don't want to grant them the waiver and we went ahead and gave them the variance, then it would still stand?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And we're going to be providing some testimony on that.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, the, the subdivision itself, Chairman, is creating the lots. I, I would think that the commission is going to be more concerned, uh, with what's being proposed on the new lots.
Okay, the, the, my, my only question is by subdividing the properties, are we creating any new undersized lots? Or more variances?
The, the lots would be undersized with respect to minimum lot width. Um, setback is up to the locations of, of the proposed buildings. Um, our review indicates, uh, that based on the subdivision, minimum lot width variances would, would be created uh, for the two new lots.
Okay. Anything else, Terry?
Relatively minor, I mean, if you look at the numbers, you have a two hundred and eighty-two foot width proposed on one, a two hundred and ninety-four width proposed on the other, compared to the three hundred foot width standard.
Okay, so, so Terry, I think you could agree to Brian that it's the minimums on this application.
That word crossed my, 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 Chairman.
Okay.
Didn't say it, though.
I'll, I'll say it when I get there.
There you go.
Okay.
I believe that's it as far as the minor subdivision. Again, under design waivers, uh, design waivers required, uh, on the subdivision plans at least, uh, sidewalk along Overland Avenue South and Vassar Avenue South frontage. Um, that is it for the minor subdivision.
Okay, Terry, just going on the sidewalks, I know we, on other applications, we asked for a meandering asphalt path instead of sidewalks.
All right, um, that may be something that the board may want to recommend here as well, Chairman. Uh, what I would like to do, if it's okay, we also have a minor site plan review that was done. Uh, the subdivision is creating a smaller parcel that the existing building sits upon. And that is the subject of the second review under SD twenty-four sixty-eight, which is minor site plan. Um, again, going on the letter, you have a number of items for submission waiver purposes. We support those as indicated for hearing purposes.
So let's act upon that, do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendations to grant the waivers for hearing purposes only?
So moved, Justin.
Justin moved, we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, Mr. Sable.
I, I, I know in January, we acted on application, I believe it was for the same building. I, I actually did not act on it, I didn't.
I think, Mr. Sable, I think it's the next property, it's one over. It's a different property.
I'm looking online, January twenty-eighth, also four seventy-five Oberlin.
And this is four eighty-five, this is four eighty-five.
Oh, okay. Four seventy-five, four seventy-five.
And they, I know, because I, I was there on that application, it's a different application.
All right, did the, the board act on submission waivers, Chairman?
Yes, we granted it.
All right, uh, I'm.
Hearing purposes only.
Thank you, uh, I'm going to continue briefly under zoning for this. Uh, as indicated, no additional bulk variances are being created on, on, on this property as a result of the subdivision. Uh, we're going to ask for, uh, testimony regarding the number of proposed off-street parking spaces uh, versus the code requirements. Um, signage, we should get testimony as well. And, uh, un- under design waivers, the design waivers required from street trees along Vassar Avenue and Overland Avenue South. That is it for this parcel.
Okay, thank you, so let's do one at a time. Uh, who's the attorney on this application? Is that Mr. Doyle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, hi, Mr. Doyle, how are you?
I'm fine, sir.
Okay, so please proceed.
Mr. Chairman, members, professionals, uh, this application is to do the mission that the industrial commission was created for, what has happened over Lakewood. Produce radibles, jobs, and solid structures. Presently, this eleven-acre site, uh, is underutilized, having one building. What we seek to do, and the questions about how we hear it, I think were fully answered correctly. The subdivision was first, and site plans were followed thereafter. The subdivision changes the eleven-acre tract into three parcels, all of conforming size. It allows the opportunity to have the two newly created lots have its own structure and at the same time clean up the site. So that's the mission and the thrust of the application, as it is of the commission and my judgment, master plan, and Lakewood. Uh, with respect to the subdivision, and just speaking to that, the only variances, as were mentioned, I don't use the word that they're limited or de minimis, but the numbers speak for themselves. While three hundred feet width is required, the two new lots will have two eighty-two and two ninety-four. They will, they will have three and a half acres, whereas three point, uh, three acres even are required. We're oversized and able to build buildings that basically meet all of the other setback and coverage requirements, albeit there's a couple of variances for the existing building and the one that was mentioned with respect to the industrial commission. So that's a broad overview. There are questions raised in Currie's report with respect to stormwater, parking, internal circulation. We have engineer Joe Kachuba, who will respond to those. I would note that a number of those comments have been clarified by our secondary, uh, second submission and, and Currie's, uh, darkened, uh, comments on each of those items. We also have, as is necessary, God Kennel, uh, as a traffic expert. And I understood that Mr. Abadi, as he stands with, would like to potentially testify. So rather than, uh, consume the meeting with me, I'd like to get to, just as we would present uh, Mr. Kachuba first on the subject, and with your permission, we'll continue right through the site plan.
Okay.
After we have a vote on the subdivision.
Okay, Gillian, could you swear in Mr. Kachuba and the traffic engineer maybe both?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Kachuba and Mr. Kennel, if you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Kachuba, please proceed.
Certainly. So, uh, Ali has the, the minor subdivision on the screen before you. Uh, as indicated by Mr. Doyle, the site in question is just shy of eleven acres, ten point nine eight acres, and is at the corner of Oberlin Avenue and Vassar Ave on the northeast corner of that intersection. It's in the M-one zone where three acres is required. Each of the proposed lots, uh, is more than three acres, of all, uh, three point two six two acres, three point six seven one, and four point oh four nine. They all exceed the three acre requirement, but we do require some de minimis, uh, width variances, uh, for the lot line. Uh, there's an existing structure on the property, looking at the minor subdivision, the bottom right-hand corner lot. Uh, that's the existing structure that's out there today, approximately fifty-one thousand square feet. Uh, has a, uh, large parking loading area north of the building, uh, parking on the west side, bottom of, of page, uh, and access out to both Oberlin and Vassar Avenue. Uh, surrounding area, Jersey Natural Gas is immediately to the east, up on page, uh, and other industrial sites around the property, uh, to the, uh, southwest, uh, and north. Uh, so the applicant does propose to subdivide into three conforming lots, conforming an area. The width variances being requested are de minimis. Lot two point oh-two is two hundred and eighty-two feet, lot two point oh-three, two hundred and ninety-four feet. Uh, there's also a discussion about the front yard setback. Now, as the board's aware, with Lakewood Industrial Commission, uh, approval, there is no variance to have a fi- fifty-foot front yard setback. One of the fifty-foot front yard setbacks is the existing building. You look at the minor subdivision plan, uh, the right-hand side, which is the south side of that building, has an existing front yard setback of fifty feet. We're not changing that. The building is staying exactly where it is. Uh, we are proposing a fifty-foot, uh, front yard setback along Oberlin uh, on the west side of the building on lot two point oh-two, which is the bottom left lot. Again, uh, with Lakewood Industrial Commission, that is, uh, permissible. Uh, my understanding is the application went to them back in December. Uh, representatives of the application, specifically Mr. Abadi was raising his hand before, have discussed this with the Lakewood Industrial Commission, and our understanding is uh, that approval is imminent, but we have not received that physical paperwork. So as a result, the ordinance would state that you would need a variance, uh, rather than, um, it be a, a permitted fifty-foot front yard setback. And I'll certainly defer to the board, if you want to hear from Mr. Abadi directly, uh, uh, on that. He's the one who spoke to Lakewood Industrial Commission himself. Uh, the variances, uh, that are being requested can be granted under both the C-one and C-two criteria. Under the C-one, the hardship variance, uh, so by reason of exceptional narrowness, shalliness, shape of a property, or exceptional situation uniquely affecting a specific piece of property or the structures lawfully existing. So in this particular case, the reason we set the property line between lots two point oh-one and two point oh-two where we did was because of the location of the existing building and parking. Specifically placed that property line to be along e- existing parking aisles, uh, that are out on the site today. Uh, so we had to shift that over a, a slight amount, uh, in order to make that work. Again, the total width of that property is six hundred feet, so we have, uh, enough for two lots, but it's better planning and creates a hardship due to the existing building to have that lot line be right at the three hundred foot mark. In addition, the, the lot line splitting two point oh-three, uh, and two point oh-two, uh, we intentionally placed that lot line because there's existing utility lines that run through that area. So we bisected the property along those, the utility line. That was intentionally done for better planning, and also those utility lines are, uh, existing, um, structures unique to this property. So based upon that, I believe variances can be granted under the C-one criteria. Under the C-two, the better planning criteria, uh, the proposed layout with the, the lot width variances promotes the general welfare. It does bring the properties more to conformance with the zone. What that means is that three-acre lots is what's permitted in the zone. Uh, the, we have more than three acres on each of these lots. Uh, there's case law that actually demonstrates that, the uh, bringing lots more into conformity with the, uh, area and density, uh, promotes the general welfare. Again, these are very de minimis variances we're requesting, uh, just simply to put these lot lines in better locations from a planning perspective. Uh, those are the only variances being requested. Everything else here is fully conforming. The, the coverages are conforming, the parking's conforming, setbacks are conforming or, or conform with the Lakewood Industrial Commission, uh, requirement. Uh, it also promotes, uh, uh, appropriate densities. Uh, and page eleven of the Lakewood Master Plan indicates, "Under economic development strategies, continue to promote economic prosperity and sound fiscal planning through coordinated efforts between Lakewood Township Committee, Industrial Commission, and Department of Economic Development." And also identifies in the M-one zone, the purposes, and it's to facilitate development of uses in industrial nature. Uh, and there's a discussion about the erosion of in- incompatible uses in the, uh, Lakewood Industrial Zone. This is a fully compatible use. This is exactly what's intended in the industrial zone. Uh, economic development, uh, of a property in the zone in industrial use, specifically, uh, wholesale trade. So, uh, this proposed, uh, application is e- exactly what the industrial commission anticipates and exactly what the zone calls for. Uh, in my opinion, there's no negative, uh, uh, detriments by granting the variances, so I believe the board could certainly grant the minor subdivision with the variances being requested.
Mr. Kachuba, what's with sidewalks?
Uh, sidewalks, there are no sidewalks in the area, uh, other than, uh, southwest of the property, one lot down is the only lot in the area, my, uh, uh, review of the sites that has any sidewalks. Uh, so we would request the waiver unless the board obviously had a, uh, a specific objection.
I, I, I know in other applications, we ask for, uh, asphalt meandering path.
And, and under normal circumstances, that would be the better option. This particular case, because of the size of this property, we are required to get a CAPR approval. And part of the CAPR approval is we need to save as many trees as possible, and our tree save area is along the front of the property. Uh, so we could do an asphalt, uh, uh, walkway, but we can't meander because I can't cut down any trees. We gotta keep it close to the curb.
No problem. Okay. Any questions for any, uh, board members on the subdivision?
Through the chair. Is that what you're, is that what we approved on four seventy-five, uh, meandering path, not curving sidewalk?
I don't.
Curb exists, so, uh, curb is certainly there, but I, I'm not sure what was approved as far as that was.
I, I would say it should probably match that.
Okay, Ali, do you remember what was approved?
No, but I don't remember, but I'll, I will check.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Uh, Mr. Garfield.
Yes, these, uh, landing, uh, question is on a curve.
Right.
It's not only we have a blind, uh, driveway, I would expect going out to Oberlin. Could we put some type of sign, like hidden driveway, so people know too? It's a bad walkway because people can't see anyone walking in the street, which I think as a safety precaution, something should be done.
Okay.
Property to the north. This is on an intersection. There's, it's actually a, uh, there is no curb on this property.
The curb was on the, I think, in the, the property from last week.
Yeah, in front of four seventy-five.
Right, there, there's a curb in four seventy-five, and then on this one, this further down. Okay, any other, any other board members have any questions? Sing, I would ask. Chaim, yes, please go ahead.
I'm asking, uh, I guess maybe traffic or maybe the architect. The entrances to the, the property, there's two very close to each other on both sides. Does that create a, a, a danger for both doing right turns, both doing left out of the property, very close to each other?
I, I think we should let Mr. Kennel answer that.
One second, uh.
Mr. Kennel's muted.
Mr. Chairman, if I may for a second, I just noticed, I think, Mr., I don't know if Mr. Doyle is here. I see a, um, caution sign up at the corner of his screen. I just want to make sure he's still at the meeting.
He's here, I think, he's in my office, but I could see him.
Oh, okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Kennel.
Yes, um, as far as the comment, and I'm sure it refers to the, um, driveways on Oberlin.
Did I have to give it sworn in?
I was, I was already.
He was sworn, he was sworn in in the beginning.
He was sworn in already, thank you.
The nature of these buildings and, and the, the site layout um, wants to provide, you know, full circulation around these buildings, and the type of uses are also low-traffic generators. I mean, they're not a, a high intensive use such as a, um, a retail use or a school. So it's, it's, and we have good sightlines along Oberlin. So based on the fact that these are low-traffic generators, we have good sightlines, it helps, the design presented helps promote positive circulation around the new building. So in my opinion, um, it can function and operate safely.
I, I mean, e- even offices, they both, everybody leaves at five o'clock together. Just imagining both of these drivers having two cars making the left turn out of this property at the same time. I, I, I think that's, that's pretty dangerous.
Uh, I don't expect it to be a frequent situation. Again, we have good sightlines, it's different from an office. We have mul- there's usually multiple tenants who have multiple, um, have different operating hours. So it's, it's a, it's more of a gradual release of traffic than, say, a larger office building that may have, uh, end time at four thirty-five o'clock.
And we, we presented the, the site plan for this yet. I'd, I'd like to bring up that exhibit once we get to that point of our testimony.
Okay.
I think it's pretty much office, uh, offices and warehouse, which is typical at the same time and same hour.
Okay, Mr. Sable. Uh, I think you're correct, but I think right now, we're just voting on a subdivision, and in order to get approval for the building, it has to make sense the driveway. Am I correct?
Well, maybe we can wait, hear everything.
Uh, I, I have no problem. But, uh, Terry felt, Terry felt that, uh, we should make the subdivision, we should have the properties, but I, we can go ahead. We know exactly what the subdivision is, and now we could continue to hear more testimony on the property.
Yeah, what I would recommend, Chairman, is to hear testimony relative to the minor site plan for, for this parcel.
Okay, uh, Terry, you have anything to add on that?
Now, we had resumemed, uh, the minor site plan review after the minor subdivision. Uh, the board has acted procedurally. Our technical comments regarding the remaining building and parcel are in our minor site plan review. Um, I heard test, I heard concerns earlier, uh, in terms of site access and sightlines. Um, now would be a good time, uh, to answer any other questions the board has on this property.
Also, with respect to your question about the sidewalks at four seventy-five Oberlin, I believe the board just required installation of regular sidewalks. There was no specification as to something other than that for that project. So the sidewalk waiver for this project is associated with the minor subdivision.
Okay, Ali, saying, thank you, saying that, I, I agree. I think we should continue with regular sidewalks, not, uh, go switch from, uh, concrete to, to asphalt.
Understood, we agree.
Okay, you agree. Uh, so regarding Mr. Sable's question about the two driveways, is anything can be done not to have them so close to each other?
I'd like to bring up the, uh, the exhibit, the rendering, um, site. Uh, I know Terry had indicated to talk about the minor site plan on the existing building first, uh, but I'm, I'm glad you addressed Mr. Sable's comments now. Uh, Mr. Chairman, however you want me to proceed.
Let's go. Yeah, yeah, Mr. Sable, what do you want to say?
Um, there's, there's two entrances. One is on Oberlin Avenue and there's one on Vassar Avenue. So in between, in between building number two, and I guess the rid, and the other two buildings, there is a divided, uh, a little grass or something you can have in there. I, I can understand that being a separate building and a separate in and out. But on the entrances on Oberlin Avenue, this is being one open parking lot between the buildings, correct? There's nothing, no barrier in between the parking lot dividing the two parking lots. Am I correct?
Uh, correct. Ali, can we bring up, uh, the, the site rendering prepared by my office?
No, I'm looking at that one on my own screen.
Um, there's two, the, the aerial rendering or the perspective rendering?
Aerial one.
Okay, I'm not sure which this is, but, oh, this one. Is that showing?
No.
Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I brought it up and I'm staring at it. I just didn't share it with you. I'm wondering why no one was saying anything. There you go.
Okay, so, uh, uh, as far as the, the minor site plan is associated with the bottom right, uh, property, so that existing building is there. The driveway out to Vassar at the top right of that building exists there today. The driveway at the bottom left, uh, exists there today. Um, so the, the application is to subdivide and create the, the other two buildings identified here. Uh, building two being the property, uh, north of the existing building, the bottom left corner of the site. Building three being at the top of the property, or top of the sheet, uh, on the east side of the site. Uh, so, Mr. Sable, I guess your, your, your comments or questions are regarding the two driveways uh, entering into the parking areas, specifically exiting out onto, uh, onto Oberlin. Uh, our intention there was to provide as much circulation through the property as, uh, as we could, so um, there was a comment in the board engineer's report regarding. uh the the two parking lots uh being connected, those were connected for multiple reasons. First being to allow for circulation through the property. We, the applicant has absolutely no objection to providing a cross access, even blanket cross access between the properties. Uh, the applicant here uh is uh is the owner of all the properties and uh intends to maintain that for a substantial time. And and wants to maintain access through the properties uh for the benefit of, you know, vehicles. Um, keeping vehicles off the street, having cross access between properties limits how many people have to go out to the intersection. Uh, we felt it better planning to do so. Secondarily, uh as I indicated before, we are required to get a CAFRA approval on this application. Uh, the CAFRA requirements for stormwater are are pretty substantial. And one of the things uh that uh came into effect is, or that affected this property was maintaining existing drainage patterns. Uh, so today, currently, that whole parking lot uh to the north of the existing building, plus approximately halfway into where we're showing the building envelope, is all one large paved area today. That all drains uh southeast uh to Vassar Avenue. Uh, it was our specific intent to not bury those two parking lots to maintain the existing drainage patterns uh for stormwater purposes, uh and that's how we submitted it to uh NJDP and CAFRA. Uh, we're required to filter uh that runoff uh that comes off of that area, uh which we are proposing a a filtering system for all of the undergrounds uh drainage, uh specifically for each of the two sites, as well as uh the drainage here in between the two sites. But that was done uh intentionally, and it's it's the applicant's, you know, design uh intent that they want these to be connected. They want to allow interconnection between the sites and allow uh vehicles to access both sites.
I I understand, that might create even more of of a mess. Cars going in and out between parked lot, between parked cars uh from one lot to the other lot.
So it's gonna operate all this one parking lot, it would be no, no different than uh you with parking lot at the, you know, the mall, Target, uh, you know, any retail center. Uh, you're gonna have two aisles with parking in between, uh and people access it just like any other site.
Correct. And any way we can change, maybe make one of them uh in and one of them out?
Uh, you're saying at the the entrance there on uh on Oberlin?
Oberlin, at least.
So the uh the rear, the northernmost access is uh is for the the loading and trucks, that that obviously is necessary. But we can certainly take a look at those uh those two driveways there. We believe that they operate well a- as two-way driveways. Uh, you'll see immediately across the street, you have two driveways that are w- within close proximity to them uh to each other. It's not, not unusual to have that in the industrial park. Uh, the township has no spacing requirement. And as the traffic engineer just testified, they don't anticipate there being any, you know, particular concern having the two entrances that close. So uh we feel it's it's certainly operable and doesn't present any kind of safety concern. Uh, the the, I know one of the questions you had was, you know, because we have a mixture of of warehouse and office. I want to be clear, the quantity of what of office here is very small. Uh, less, about ten percent or less of the uh square footage here is office. It's primarily warehouse, it's primarily storage, uh where you're gonna have uh truck traffic entering the the larger driveway.
Yeah, that could, that could create a problem when you have the two tractor trailers coming in, but the driveway is so close to each other.
Uh, the intent, the design here is that the the tractor trailers don't use those two driveways. Uh, there's no, there's no reason for a tractor trailer to enter in the front of the building. They're gonna use that northern driveway to get into the back loading.
So so your testimony is these two driveways are gonna have very minimal traffic?
Very minimal traffic and essentially passenger cars only.
Okay.
I mean, i- if trucks are coming in from the north entrance, wh- where are they going out from? They have to go around the building, correct? Unless they back in and come back out the same way?
Well, these are loading docks, so the intent is they're gonna pull in the back and they're gonna turn uh and key turn into a loading dock, unload, and then turn back out and exit out that same driveway.
Wow, so let's look at, I I I, okay, let's look at the last loading. I guess that might work, I don't see a circulation plan, he didn't give us a a normal circulation plan showing trucks going in and out. But looking at the last loading zone, so a truck would come in, the north head toward, I guess, head the east, and then make that turn back in, is that enough space in that corner? If you have cars parked at that corner, I don't know if that works.
Which uh which corner are you talking about, the uh the top of that building or the bottom?
The east side of building number three.
The east side, uh, yeah, I believe there is sufficient room there because we do have that extension and we kept that aisle there very wide. And you'll see the area to the right, we did not curb that, that that white area. Um, if you want to zoom into that top end of building three, um alley, you'll see that's that's striping to allow for circulation and movement such that a truck can make it into that space.
Wow, so all the cars in between this, you expected to go out from the south, most southern driveway, not the northern?
Correct, and we designed that intentionally, that driveway there is thirty feet wide intentionally uh for the uh, you know, more industrial uh access.
The middle one is intent just for trucks to come out as well? Twenty-seven point two five.
Um, which which middle one are you speaking of?
On on Oberlin, this is number one, two and three, one for the trucks, we we know that. And then there's a middle one, and then there's the south one closest to Vassar.
So the south one closest to Vassar, that that's existing, that that's built, that's there today.
That'll be for cars and that'll be used. And the middle one, do you think trucks will come out from there after using the warehouse?
It it's not our intention that trucks would come across the the face of the building. It's not uh typical for that to happen. Um, we did provide a little bit of extra room here just in case, there's a safety valve. But our intention is that ev- all the trucks are gonna use the thirty-foot uh wide driveway.
Uh, across the street, it's two separate owners, two separate buildings, and I guess they are entitled to have a separate entrance. And there's nothing we can do about it, but this is very close to each other. I I think we should do a right in and maybe a right uh uh or one in, one in and one out, instead of two ins and two outs. And have some sort of in-betweens, remove maybe four, four to six parking lots and have a a a drive-through in in-between somewhere, maybe closer to the entrance. Not sure if you understand what I'm saying, I can repeat.
No, I I I understand that, you know, that wasn't part of our design, I would have to defer to the to the applicant if we uh wanted to change that.
I should give you a chairman.
Minor.
Yes. The the, can we get Scott's opinion on Hines' recommendation?
We know what he's gonna answer, we know what he's gonna answer. And it's fine, and it's a level C, and it's okay.
Right, yeah, my question is, Terry, do you feel comfortable that you and Mister Keshuba can work out something comfortable? Uh, something more safe than it's right now with the driveway?
Well, I think we can work it out, since Mister Kennel's an expert. I'd like to get an opinion as to whether he feels the recommended one-in-one-out and cross, is that a benefit?
I I would say, if we're gonna.
One, one, one at a time, please, one at a time. Mister Kennel, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, so can you answer?
Yeah, if we're gonna deviate from this current design, I, my suggestion would be you maintain the existing driveway to the existing building and then have a connection into um the new parking area to the new building. I wouldn't recommend in uh a separate ingress and egress, because that just creates too much internal conflicts, in my opinion. But if we were to create a situation where the, I'll call it the middle driveway, the ones at twenty-seven point two five feet, if that is closed and that we provide an interconnection uh as an extension of the drive aisle in front of the existing building, um, I I would have to look at that with Chokushuba and, you know, make sure that it doesn't have an impact on the parking yield uh necessary to support the building. That's.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, Chairman, I kind of like the idea of one access there better as well. Um, you know, the one concern I would have is, you know, you get that occasional person who's not following the directions.
Yeah, my my question to you, uh, how do we proceed? Uh, if they're changing the plan, if they want to revisit the plan, how do we proceed to?
I don't believe we're we're proposing the change of plan this evening. You know, I I, we've had many discussions with the applicant about this uh this layout and specifically having the two separate driveways. Uh, and I don't believe we're willing to, uh, you know, combine the two um for maintenance purposes. You know, the intent being we're allowing access between the two for circulation. Uh, but I believe both want their own driveway, maintenance purposes, snow, things like that. Uh, if if one building's active, one building's not, uh, they're gonna want their own particular driveway.
Chairman, um, I think if this is the lone outstanding issue on this application, I think the board could act as a condition of approval uh that this would be designed per our review uh as well as the industrial commission, as well as traffic safety. I think everyone's on board.
Basically, I don't think there's any other issues, there's no variances. There's a front setback variance, which is the minimus, there's no other variances on this application.
Yeah, I I I kind of like the idea of having one access here versus two.
That that's why I asked you if you feel comfortable that you can work something with engineer. I would go ahead.
Chairman, did we, did we get to the two site plan review letters and?
No, no, we did not get to the site plan.
Okay.
This is just a subdivision.
Okay.
This is strictly the subdivision, and uh once we get to it, uh, we can get to the next thing.
Yeah, what we we could do procedurally, Chairman, if you want to act upon the subdivision only first, then we can do the other two larger parcel site plan reviews and act on the three site plan reviews concurrently.
Okay, uh, Ali, I I told you today I may have to go to New York, I have to go to New York. So I will be leaving in about fifteen minutes, and Mister Stern will be taking over. To finish, to finish me. I have uh, I have a simcha in New York, I was supposed to be there earlier, but I stayed earlier.
I'm just concerned that we're getting a little mushy on what pieces of this submission we're looking at. Um, if we're talking about the minor subdivision right now, the minor subdivision does not propose improvements. So we would not be talking about entrances and exits, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, I I thought we were talking about the stand, this is Justin, I thought we were talking about the standalone site approval for the existing building now.
I I know.
We were past the minor subdivision already.
Right, and if we're, well, if we're talking about, so the minor subdivision originally did not include any site plan for the existing building, which is why the site plan for this existing building has ended under, ended up under the subdivision number. However, that would not incorporate any of the entrances over here that have now come up for discussion. This amended site plan is just this existing entrance here.
Okay, Ali.
That's why I think if you act upon all the site plans at once, you have the flexibility of making sure that that's addressed.
Okay. So then Terry, then we're back to you to go through the site plans.
Yeah, my my recommendation, Chairman, I mean, we can resume the other two site plans now if you want.
Right, or?
Or. Or act on the subdivision only and then proceed with resumes of the other two.
I, through the chair.
I'm fine either way, whichever way the board's more comfortable.
Through the chair, Mister Chairman, this is Lady Asixon.
Yes.
I I would, I think we should hear all three.
Okay, no problem.
All right, I'm gonna continue then on the other two site plan parcels, if that's okay?
Yes, yes, please.
All right, you have to bear with me, this is a little logistically challenging. I believe Ali has up the review for um proposed lot two point oh three, uh SP twenty-four oh two. I'm going to read from our February twenty-second review. Under submission waivers, we have a number of them listed on page three. Uh, the B waivers, topo contours and manmade features within two hundred feet, plans and profiles, uh proposed or existing easements, as well as EIS. Uh, we support the waivers for submission purposes uh as referenced in the review.
Okay.
So the board would have to act upon those submission waivers.
Yeah, so we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations on the waivers.
Moved by Justin.
Moved by Justin, do we have a second? I'll, I'll sec- second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay.
All right, continuing on under zoning, uh as indicated in comment two, there's no additional bulk variances other than what you just heard under the minor subdivision. Uh, comment three uh talks about the number of parking spaces, we'll get testimony on that shortly. Similarly, uh, the applicant will have to to address whether uh there's any sign relief sought. Um, that is it under zoning. Under design waivers, um, there you have relief required for perimeter buffer release um as well as a driveway width of thirty-four feet versus the thirty-foot code maximum. Uh, and then finally, design waivers required from providing street trees along Vassar Avenue. And that is the relief for uh SP twenty-four oh two.
Okay, the next one?
Okay, I'm gonna read from the the next site plan, which is SP twenty-four oh three. This is proposed lot two point oh two. Again, this, our letter is dated February twenty-second. Looking under submission waivers, I suspect that this is very similar to the other site plan. Uh, once again, uh topo contours, manmade features within two hundred feet, plans and profiles, easements, EIS. We support the waivers for hearing purposes only.
And we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations.
Moved, moved by Justin, second.
Second, all in favor, aye? Okay, on to zoning, please.
Yeah, and zoning is identical to the other site plan parcel. Um, the applicant will have to testify as to the accuracy of parking versus UDO standards, uh as well as when he's, whether any site plant relief is necessary. Under design waivers, perimeter buffer release required, and that is it for this parcel.
So Terry, you don't know what's going into these buildings to have um a parking chart, to know how much parking we need, is that correct?
Well, these are new facilities, we're gonna get testimony from the applicant as to what is proposed.
What uses?
We have all that information on the plans, I'm prepared to testify about it.
Okay, uh, is Mister, Mister Doyle, you have anything to add?
I'm still here, but let me have Mister Keshuba, what we did do at the beginning, and let it apply to all of this testimony given uh equally, his expertise and having recognized by the board and Mister Kennel.
Okay, so Mister Keshuba, please proceed. Um, Julian.
Would you like me to give my qualifications?
Yeah, one second, no. Uh, Ju- Julian, would they swap in on all three?
Uh, Mister Chairman, um, I, to be on the safe side, I um I I can just re swear in the professionals on this plan, uh this particular.
Okay, so so we're talking about two, both both subdivisions.
Right.
Both site plans, not the subdivision, both site plans.
So Mister Keshuba and uh Mister, is Mister, Mister Kennel here to testify on the two site plans as well?
Yes.
Okay, if you two gentlemen can please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimonies that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you very much, you can proceed.
Mister Keshuba, please proceed.
And Mister Doyle was talking in my ears, so I I'm testifying both as a professional engineer and professional plan.
Not as an attorney, okay.
Not as an attorney, no.
Okay, no problem.
Are you doubling your hourly rate?
Yeah, uh, I I wish. Um, so on the existing building, the parking requirements, sixty-eight stalls are required, eighty-four are provided uh on lot two point oh two. And we could probably bring up that exhibit again, two point oh two button on the left of the screen. Uh, the parking requirements there are seventy-four stalls required, seventy-six provided, uh and two point oh three, eighty-three stalls required, ninety-two provided. The proposed use on this site is wholesale trade, that is what we're requesting approval for. And again, we're fully compliant with parking uh for that use. Uh, and our breakdowns are based upon uh the square footage of warehouse and office. So we do provide the additional parking demand for the office area. So we do provide the additional parking demand for the office area. But again, as I testified, the quantity of office here is very small. These, these are, you know, warehouses.
Yeah, Mr. Keshuba, should you want to switch more, the warehouse to offices, you're going to have to come back to the board because then you may be deficient in parking. Is that correct?
We stated a, a parking deficiency, that would have to come back to the board, and we gotta have to show additional parking or request a parking vary.
Okay, so the.
Chair?
Yes, so, so right now.
Go ahead.
No, so right now they're, they're stating on, they're not asking for any parking variance.
Correct.
Okay, on all, on, on all buildings?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stern, you have a question?
Mr. Keshuba, um, is this application related in some way to the ordinance that we just recommended on the beginning of the meeting?
I don't believe it is because we applied prior to that ordinance being, uh, adopted. So, uh, we're governed by the ordinances at the time of application.
So are you just building this on spec or there's like a specific? I mean, this is many, many units, but is there a specific use that you're intending here?
Uh, it, there are some specific users, I believe. They, uh, they currently own and operate the existing building, uh, and they're looking to expand their tenancy for, for additional buildings. The, uh, you see the, the, the light lines on the plan, uh, building two is broken into, you know, what we would expect to be five, uh, units, uh, five separate, uh, you know, separations of the building, uh, and building three being six. Uh, now obviously those, uh, uh, somebody could get two units or one unit, but the intention is to have, uh, you know, several wholesale trade users here.
Mr. Keshuba, what percent would you say is warehousing, what percent will be offices?
It's ninety percent warehouse, ten percent office.
And that's what you said, that, that's, that's what you're basing your, your parking on. Should that change, then you have to come back to the board to ask, uh, to switch that around.
Correct. And, and again, they're utilizing the existing building and that has a very similar ratio. So that, that is how they operate these buildings.
Okay, now I don't want the building to become total, five stories, total offices, and, uh, and we don't have parking for it.
I, yeah, I, I doubt they could build five stories here without anybody seeing it.
Okay. Okay, please, uh, please continue.
Uh, so there are no other changes to existing building or the areas around the existing building. We're not proposing any landscaping. Uh, the existing lighting on the existing building is to remain, uh, the signage there is, is, is very limited, uh.
Are, are there any variances to the building, setback variances? I know you said before you have a frontage variance.
That's the only, that's the only variance being requested. That's a, a technical variance simply because we don't have an answer of, of, of.
Right, besides that, there are no others, uh?
Besides that, we comply with coverage and we comply with all setup.
Okay, okay. And, and you comply, and you comply with the parking?
With the parking, yep. And we're also, we are requesting the waiver from the street tree requirement. Uh, again, this is a CAFR application. We're required to maintain a certain amount of trees. So all the treed areas, uh, along the frontage of the existing building, as well as along the frontage of building three, are all going to remain. So we're requesting the waiver because it'd be silly to cut down trees to plant them.
Okay, uh, we putting garbage on this property?
Uh, we have two large, uh, refuse enclosures proposed for the two proposed buildings. Uh, one is in the bottom left corner. Uh, it's a twenty by thirty refuse enclosure, uh, for building two. And then one at the top left corner, uh, it's another twenty by thirty refuse enclosure for building three. Uh, it's very large.
Okay, and, uh, now just before I go, and regarding the sidewalks and all this, you agree to put sidewalks?
We'll agree to provide sidewalks along the frontage, normal sidewalk.
Okay.
Uh, and we're also stipulating all signage will comply.
Okay, you're not asking any variance on that?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that sidewalk without curbs or with curbs?
Uh, the curbs are there today. The curbs exist.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The curbs are existing right now. So it's, it's curbs, it's curbs and sidewalks. That's basically a testimony.
Correct.
Do, do we have any questions from any board members? For Mr. Keshuba?
I still would like to, uh, discuss that in and out, and I'm not sure what the solution is, but, uh, it definitely needs to be discussed.
Okay, um.
And I do have, uh, on the two proposed buildings, I believe all of it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, and identified in the, the packages, the lot two point oh two, we have four thousand three hundred thirty-five square feet of office and forty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-one square feet of warehouse, lot two point three.
Which is, which is roughly ten percent.
Roughly ten percent. And, and if that one's a little less than ten percent, uh, lot two point oh three, we're fifty.
I said, I said roughly.
Uh, uh, well, my point is one's less, one's more, so like, yeah, about ten. Uh, lot three, two point oh, fifty-two oh two, uh, in a fifty thousand five hundred seventy-eight, whatnot. So yeah, they average out to roughly ten percent.
Okay.
All the landscaping is really focused at the entrances, as is typical for an industrial site, want to clean up and make it look nice. It's an industrial site. We don't want to plant a bunch of trees that the trucks are going to hit.
Okay, um.
Are there any buffers, uh, gates, dividers in between the neighbors?
Uh, we're not proposing any as of now. I'm sure a, a particular user could, you know, fence the property specifically lot, uh, two point oh three, but no, we're not, we're not proposing any, um, you know, very typical.
Uh, uh, I think, I think you testified, he's key, he's keeping it, the owner. He's just renting it out.
Yeah.
Neighbor property, I think is, he's the same owner. Four seventy-five is the same owner.
And how about on Vassar?
Vassar, on Vassar, they have, uh, I think the Cheder building. And I think that's on the side or back.
Okay, so, I mean, you need a, a buffer, a protection from kids coming from the Cheder onto this lot? Do we need something?
I.
Is it a design waiver, I believe, correct?
I think it's, there's a fence over there. Uh, Chaim Abad is shaking his head. I think there's, I, I, I was out there at the property. I went to look at it. I think there's a fence back that's separating the Cheder from, uh, from.
And, and along, uh, the, the back of that property, lot two point oh three, there's actually a pretty big elevation difference. So there'll be about a four-foot retaining wall. This property is a little higher. Uh, so for somebody to walk onto the property, they're going to have to climb up a, a retaining wall, which will have to have a, uh, a, a proper, uh, garden up top of it.
On Vassar Avenue or Oberlin? I know Oberlin had a retaining wall.
It's actually in the back of the site, nowhere near the streets, uh, on the back of lot two point oh three, the one on the top of the page, uh, top, top left side.
So you have a natural barrier?
Correct.
Chairman, this is not the Cheder. It's, uh, New Jersey National Gas, next door neighbor.
On the back of them? So the Cheder's behind, the Cheder's behind maybe the, the last week's application, four seventy-five?
Yeah, yeah, maybe. Yeah, you're right, chairman. This one is New Jersey.
Mr. Chairman, Chaim Abad is not allowed to shake his head without being affirmed.
Okay, good. Okay, uh.
Either not his intent, I'm negative.
Bru- Bruce, can, uh, can you, can you please take over?
Yes, sir. Enjoy your simcha.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So are we up to, I guess we, the chairman asked, was there any further comments from the board? So hearing none, um, Ali, do we have any comments from the public? I think that's the next, uh, next step.
I did not receive any under the SP or the SD. No, none of them. Unless there's anyone attending who would like to speak.
Okay, hearing none. Um, I believe we put this to a vote or is, am I missing something?
In and out, we have to figure out what we're going to do with the planning.
So do, are we going to have testimony from the traffic engineer?
Well, Ma- Ma- Mr. Stern, this is Justin, chairman. Uh, I think the, 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 the traffic engineer said that, um, he would not recommend keeping what I'm going to call the middle entrance on Oberlin, that he would actually recommend closing off that entrance and then doing a cross-access easement so people could come in and out through the existing entrance, then go out on Vassar, have the option also to go add on to Vassar. So, uh, Mr. Keshuba indicated that, uh, he would have to go back to the applicant. Uh, Mr. Keshuba, what are the applicant's concerns about, about, uh, doing that or looking into that?
Uh, as I testified, the, uh, the concern is that, uh, you know, they want to maintain the ability to have separate, uh, sites here. You know, their intention is to own this for, for some time, but, uh, they want to be able to maintain the site separately, have separate access. Uh, if for some reason the, the owner of the existing building at some point in the future, um, you know, if we're, doesn't plow the front driveway or something, that they want to be able to maintain their own access, that they have access into their site. Uh, so that's why we provided separate accesses on the two lots, uh, but tried to maintain the drainage patterns and allow for some cross-access through the site, but the, the owner was very clear that they wanted to maintain.
Okay, so.
And I, and I just wanted to clarify, this is Scott Kennel. Clarify, my comment was if we were to deviate from this, I would not recommend one-way driveways. Because I, in my opinion, that would create, um, you know, internal conflicts. Um, but if there was to be a deviation, then I said one driveway. But I still, you know, state as Mr. Keshuba said, this allows both buildings to operate independently, and they are low-volume driveways, and we have good sightlines. So that, I just want to clarify my testimony previously. Right, right. So I guess my question, we, we, we had that discussion earlier in the meeting and we talked about letting the professionals talk about it. So is this something we can vote on now, Terry? And then let you confer with the applicant's professionals and come up something when we come to, for resolution? Or do we need to mull this over a little bit more? Trying to understand how ripe this is for decision.
I think, chairman, if this is the, the only major issue, uh, that the board has with approval, I think that you could give conditional approval. Keep in mind that the applicants agreed to all of our letters, and all of our letters have the Lakewood Industrial Commission as outside agency approval. So we have to get the industrial commission, uh, as sign-off on these site plans as well, even if the board approves. Uh, the other thing that I want to do is indicate earlier, um, I would like to get the commission's input on, on however the access is, whether it's what show now or whether it's one access. I would also like to get input from, from, uh, Township Traffic Safety.
So what we, but, so how do we meld all of this input into a res- and something that we're proposing tonight? It's, uh?
I had an opportunity to speak to my client.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I spoke to my client. They wouldn't have an objection to a single driveway. Uh, what I would offer to the board is that we, we would stipulate that we would agree to a single driveway, subject to approval of a single driveway by the Lakewood, uh, Township, uh, Industrial Commission, as well as traffic safety. If both of them were acceptable of a single driveway, we would have no objection to provide a single driveway.
So Terry, is that your preference to do that? Just tell me again, is this your preference to do as a single driveway and just have cross easements between the two properties?
Yeah, I, personally, if you can regulate the flow coming out of both uses, and I believe you can, uh, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, if you have conventional stop signs, stop boards and, and, and traffic signage, uh, I believe you could regulate both flows based on the type of tenants. Is that correct?
That's correct, in fact, and, and, and also the, the basis that these driveways were primarily used by passenger vehicles and not, uh, trucks. Correct.
Correct. So it's not like you're, you're going to have an overflow of vehicles if you limit it to one access point versus two. Uh, if you have one access point, you, you don't have the concerns about, you know, what happens with one movement in one driveway versus the other. So I think that there's a benefit, properly engineered, once again, with the approval of the industrial commission as well as input from Township Traffic Safety.
So Terry, how would you, Terry, how would you word, how would you word the motion so that we have the opportunity, I, I wouldn't want to have the applicant have to go get input and the input is slightly contrary to our motion, and they have to come back to us. How can we word the motion that they can get the input, you can get input, everybody can have, you know, a pow-wow and come to a meeting the minds, and then you're kind of empowered to formulate that into the resolution?
All right, I'm going to play amateur attorney. Everybody stand back.
Okay.
I would have something, I, I would put this language, uh, in the site plan resolution for the parent parcel where the existing building is, as well as the proposed site plan, uh, on the adjacent parcel to the left of the existing parcel. In both resolutions, I would put something to the effect that the applicant agrees to work with the board engineer, Lakewood Township and Lakewood Township Industrial Commission to develop a central access drive that will serve both parcels along this particular road frontage. You took it away from me. I think it's Oberlin Avenue South?
Yeah, Oberlin Avenue, correct.
Right. In the event that that cannot be reached, the applicant will return to the board, um, for a, a, a necessary access amendment.
Well, I, I believe our, our intent would be, we're stipulating, we were, if that's, uh, if everyone agrees to it, we're certainly willing to put the, the single driveway in. Uh, I think we would just revert to this design if for some reason the industrial commission or traffic safety thinks that, that, that would be, uh, you know, an improper design. I don't foresee that happening, um, but I, I think we would just revert to this design.
Through the chair, can I, can I offer something? I, I, um, I, I think Mr. Keshuba, I think he's right on point. I, you know, in my opinion, um, I, 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 you know, I think that, uh, I, uh, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion saying that, uh, uh, we, we should have one entrance off of Oberlin, um, and that the applicant should work with the industrial commission, uh, more importantly with traffic and safety. If traffic and safety says they don't want, uh, one, one access, they want two, well, I, I'll defer to traffic and safety.
I, I agree with you, Justin.
Uh, and chairman, I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, so before we get there, thank you. Um, Terry, that was a noble effort to play attorney, but I would like to hear our actual attorney, make sure she's okay. It sounds good to me, but, um, are you okay with what Terry described?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Terry did a great job, um, with, uh, you know, drafting out loud what the condition would say in those, the resolutions. And I would agree also what, with what Mr. Keshuba said and, um, and Mr. Flansbaum. I think, you know, if traffic safety came back and said this is a major issue, you know, it, they're the experts on traffic safety, so.
So would it have to come back to us then?
No, it was. Uh, chairman, I, I'm sorry, I, 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 what I said was, was I, I'm prepared to make a motion. I feel comfortable. I feel comfortable saying that if traffic and safety said, no, revert back to the middle driveway, I'm going to call it, then that's fine. They don't have to come back to us. I defer to traffic and safety. I've worked a lot with traffic and safety. They know this area better than anybody. I'll defer to them.
Okay, so.
They're the institutional knowledge of the chair, of the Township chairman. Uh, I, I value their input as well.
Okay, so Mr. Mr. Flansbaum, uh, please articulate this. And, uh, maybe Ali, you want to put up the notes again that you just were typing about, uh, what Terry said? So Russell has that.
I scrapped them because they typically, I don't take such detailed notes. Um, they will appear in the minutes almost word for word, which is where Billy pulled them from for the resolution.
All right, Justin, for it.
Well, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we need three motions. We have a minor subdivision, we have a standalone site plan, and then we have the third site plan for both, for the two new.
Well, you actually have four. You have the resultant site plan on, on the existing building. So you have the minor subdivision and three site plants.
Okay, that's correct. So I think, uh, chairman, if, uh, if, if we may, I think the first motion we need is for the minor subdivision approval. Is that correct?
Because otherwise each other's.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I will make a motion to, uh, approve the minor subdivision as presented.
Second, okay, uh, I guess we should have a vote, roll call?
Yes, I had a, a motion by Mr. Flansbaum and a second by Mr. Meyer. I will take a roll call. Mr. Garfield. Mr. Garfield on the minor subdivision.
He is muted.
I just requested he be unmuted. Mr. Garfield, you can just unmute yourself.
All right, we will come back to him. I'm going to take Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
I want to clarify, this include, on all the resolutions, on all the, all the votes, will be, uh, normal sidewalk as we discussed.
Yes, sidewalk was referenced in this one.
And, and before we go to the next vote, I have a question for Terry. I was trying to get.
In the middle of voting. In the middle of voting?
I think we're in the middle of voting. Let's wait till the next vote, can we get there? We're in the middle of voting.
Mr. Sable voted yes, who's next?
Mr. Isaacson on the minor subdivision.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer on the minor subdivision. Thank you. Mr. Garfield on the minor subdivision.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have five, is that five?
Yeah, that's, um, six.
Did you call me, Ali?
Oh, did I skip you, I'm so sorry. Mr. Flansbaum, Mr. Flansbaum makes six.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, hon.
The RSIS, there's a certain requirement for two-hundred feet in between access. Is that a requirement or is that a recommendation? That's for commercial?
Let's go over what the R stands for in RSIS. Residential.
I saw Scott laughing, that was pretty good, huh, Scott?
Ali, what comes next?
Now, we are on the, hold on, I'm, thank you, Terry, on the amended, I'm sorry, on the site plan for the existing lot, which is under SD Twenty-Four-Sixty-Eight.
Okay, and that's, and that's the one, that's the one with the existing driveway?
Correct, on the bottom-right corner that we were looking at on the exhibit.
So the motion's gonna include the existing, the existing building with the existing driveway only? Okay. I'll make a motion to approve that is presented with sidewalk, real sidewalk included.
Second. Roll call?
Mr. Garfield.
Dave, can you unmute?
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Chaim, you're also muted.
Thank you. Mr. Flansbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is SP Twenty-Four-O-Two, which is proposed Lot Two Point Oh Three, which is the one to the left of the existing lot.
That's the one with the driveway, which is...
Correct.
...way on Vassar.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that is presented also with sidewalk across the real sidewalk.
And I'll second. But don't we need to put some of the language regarding working with Terry for the single entrance?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be where the, where I'm gonna call the middle driveway, and Oberlin comes in, which is the next one. Is that, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I believe the one we're discussing right now is the one with the middle driveway on Oberlin, that's to the left of the existing site.
Oh, okay, okay.
Chairman, I would put that language in the site plan resolutions for both the budding parcels, the existing building and the building on the left.
Well, we kind of voted on the other one, so it hasn't...
Then we'll have to handle it on the one, then.
Okay, do it on the one. So, Justin, take a crack at it.
Yeah, so I would like to make a motion to approve the, the site plan as presented. However, we, our preference is to, is to eliminate the middle driveway and just use the existing driveway on Oberlin, and to create a cross-access easement with the new building and the driver which is going out onto Vassar. However, that's subject to the review of the Lakewood Industrial Commission and Traffic and Safety. And if Traffic and Safety should determine that a middle driveway is safer, then I will have to traffic with Safety, and my motion will include that the applicant will not have to come back before the planning board.
I will second that. And I think, and it's clear that we're giving Terry kind of broad discretion to implement the same.
Correct.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
He's unmuted.
No, he's not.
My vote is no.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacson, I'm sorry, Mr. Flansbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Motion passes. The last one is SP Twenty-Four-O-Three, which is the site plan for the lot that was on the top of the exhibit we looked at.
I'm gonna make a motion, this is also linked to the last one, because the, I'll make a motion, but they have to, I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with sidewalks, regular sidewalks. However, they may have to grant a cross-access easement to the property with the middle driveway, should Traffic and Safety agree, agree with us, that the middle driveway should be eliminated. If the middle driveway is eliminated, they'll have to grant a cross-access easement.
I'll second that.
Okay, and I'll take a roll?
Yes, please.
Mr. Garfield?
No.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
I'm gonna say no, and the reason is because I want him to come back to the board, not rely a hundred percent on the traffic and safety, but if the board says yes, then...
Mr. Isaacson?
You want to skip Justin again?
I know, I keep, I keep auto playing his answer since he made the motion. I'll take Mr. Isaacson since I called you.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbaum?
Yes.
Thank you, and Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman, filling in, Chairman, just so you know, we do have minutes and bills left for this evening, so.
I just want to make sure that those motions included the front yard setback variances for the fifty feet?
My motion said as presented, so it's...
As presented, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Pending the Lakewood Industrial Commission.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
In favor? Need a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
And before we adjourn, I think it might be useful, Jillian and Terry and everybody, maybe circulate the motion or the proposed order, once you've done all the sausage making and you got this done, we would like to see that proposed resolution well in advance of when we're gonna be expected to vote on it.
When you say resolution, Chairman, you mean the physical resolution of approval?
The resolution approval is kind of our last bite at the apple, and not that we're gonna make substantive changes, but, you know, you're playing attorney, and Justin was trying to wrap together three different things and a subdivision, this one was a little bit spaghetti. So I would like to see the, I think we would all like to see the resolution well in advance, and I want, you know, especially Justin made the motion, I want to make sure it's consistent with what he thought he said.
Because until tonight, we didn't know, we didn't know that warehouses were permitted use in the industrial park.
What was that?
And just to, excuse me for a moment, I'd be happy to get the resolutions out to the board well in advance of when they're going to be adopted.
That's the plan.
The board doesn't necessarily have to act on the same cycle. I know most times they go right from the applicant's professionals right on the hearing. I mean, if the board wanted to, they could wait a cycle and make sure you had time to answer any questions you have.
Generally, these, these resolutions won't go on until April twentieth, so assuming you're gonna get the minutes done in the next couple days like usual, then Jillian can get the resolutions done and we can circulate them with plenty of time.
Okay, sounds, sounds fair to me. Thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Move to adjourn.
Some moves, second.
A good night. Thank you, everyone, good night.
Everybody.
Someone, Ali, yes?